Pat French.
Tom here.
Harry Armstrong.
My respect to it.
Sheriff.
Shannon Hens. Say it again. Shannon Hens. Shannon. Hi.
I think the other person was Sheriff Boniak. Is that you Sheriff Boniak?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you Sheriff.
Okay. And we had Kevin Taylor.
We have Kevin Taylor and we have Wayne Warner who just spoke.
Is everybody on the phone?
Our Cliff Rangton.
We also have Melissa.
Melissa Scolera, Bob Fretzie.
Our health and deputy health officers.
And Adolfo, for those of us on the phone, can we get the city office in first?
Sorry Trini, what was that? It broke out a little.
Can you tell us who's there in the town offices?
Yes, here is me representing the select board and we have a member from Orca Media.
Wayne Fisher.
Wayne Fisher.
Is Dave Crosby in on this?
Dave from the Herald was notified but he has not identified himself and may not be on the call.
Okay. Thanks. Dave, first up is public comment. This is anything that's not on the agenda for tonight. Hearing none, move on to approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Harry?
Aye, aye.
Okay, I got that. Thanks. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Next up is new business and the first item is the town response to COVID.
If I could just share with the board, we have several members of town staff that are involved with various groups in town, both directly and indirectly, collecting information, disseminating information. We have members of the board that are working with groups that are circulating resources that may be necessary or needed in the community. So we're doing what we can given the unusual circumstances that we're presented with. We are for the most part at 100% staffing, so our staff continue to operate. Some are working from home. Our highway crews have kept the roads open as best they can given the recent storm, but everyone's still on the job.
Great. Are we having any challenges getting anything that the town needs at this time?
Not the town necessarily. We have heard from the sheriff's department, we have heard from our first responders about a need for personal protection equipment. The same challenges that are being faced by medical professionals and public safety officials nationwide. We did circulate a request from the state to our first responders asking if they need any PPEs. We have received a response from nearly everyone and we will be submitting that request. We know that some of our fire departments have already secured some protective personal equipment from local companies, so we, from what I was shared earlier today with one of our chiefs, is that we have sufficient to last us for at least a month or two, maybe three. But otherwise, we're still working to have as much PPE equipment as needed and we're working with the sheriff's department to get them what they need.
Can we translate for the fire departments what they're covered for in terms of call numbers versus a month or two months? Only thinking that, you know, the volume of calls that they might see ebbs and flows.
Yeah, I have not spoken to them about call volume, mostly just information on expected length of time, but I could coordinate with them.
I can answer that.
Can you just identify your?
Sure. This is Michael Hildbrand with the Randolph Village Fire Department.
Oh, there's a new name. You didn't identify yourself.
You guys were already talking, so. So what I did for the village is I estimated our average number of calls and with the modification of our response to limiting the number of people who are coming in close contact with the public, I then times that out by the number of masks, gloves, and other disposable items that we would have. And we're looking at deconning safety glasses, so we have eye protection, but we do have enough masks to last us, if we hit an average number of calls, which is 10 per month, about two months' time. If we are less than that, it'll be three months. If it's more than that, it will be closer to a month. We also have the opportunity with the mobile hospital and the fire station to grab some additional items and working with the Vermont Division of Emergency Management to restock those items as we use them.
Okay. When you, so some of the, have you talked with the health department about the risk benefit of the mask?
Not specifically, but I told them what I was doing and they did not subject.
Okay. Kevin Taylor, any idea where East Randolph stands?
Yes, we have been able to gather up a reasonable amount of equipment from area vendors and donations. I don't have it all worked out as well as Mike does, but we have enough to cover, I would say, a month or so worth of our average calls. We don't get too many calls anyway, but the three stations got together to talk about it because as people get more sick and what have you, we're going to have to adjust our response, be it mutual aid or, you know, other kinds of things. So I think we're doing our best to stay ahead of it.
Okay. Thanks. Sheriff Boniak, we see a request to change call, to change coverage because of call rates and this is one of the pieces that was predicted when the quarantine started coming down, you know, we kind of probably not joked, we joked about it, that, you know, what we were going to see is a baby boom in December, but the alternative to that is we're going to see a higher percentage of domestic violence and things going on. I'd seen the request to increase patrols. I looked at that and the FEMA money that's coming out, that guidance just came out on, is going to cover those costs if they can be tracked separately to be a direct result of quarantines and the COVID. So I'm not sure if you're, are you seeing, are you seeing a higher demand for services at this time?
Yes, we are. We're seeing the increase in family disturbances. It's been mainly 15, 16-year-olds fighting with parents. You know, they want to continue their regular routine where parents are trying to, you know, keep their kids home. And, you know, we did have one domestic which at least led to an arrest just the other night in the village. So we are seeing an uptick. And what we were talking about, what I mentioned to Adolfo was basically from 11, roughly 11 o'clock in the morning till 9:00 at night, having possibly a second person on just in the village. You know, we did call the state police for backup the other night when we made the arrests. You know, we are using social distancing for, you know, we're asking people to, you know, step out of the house sometimes wherever possible. We are in need of the N95 mask and the main reason we need those is for, if we have to transport somebody in a vehicle, because then we can find space. So that's our need for, you know, I don't need many masks. Hopefully, we won't see too many people are going to go to jail. Right now the courts, so everyone knows, the courts are basically emergency hearings only, so our transports are basically, the routine transports we normally do have stopped. And like I said, it's only going to be for emergencies. That's what I have so far.
I think we need, I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on this, but I think we need to err on the side of having coverage in public safety being key because I don't think this is going to get any better. And the, you know, I think we can tie this directly to quarantines and now the governor's announcement that came out just as we were coming on this call is calling for basically anybody that's not essential to quit their activities outside the home. So I think your job is going to get a little bit more dynamic, unfortunately. And even that it's going to be an expense that is going to be coming under the criteria for covered costs. I just am not sure, not sure what the risk is of that, you know, I, you know, at some point, can't imagine every cost that we can come up with is going to be covered, but.
Right. And I have to keep in, so I've been spending the majority of my days, I'll be honest, I've been, I know we've had so many conference calls from, you know, not just the local, but statewide and even on a national level. You know, we're, it's, this is ever, it's, this is changing so rapidly. You know, just in a few days, we went from a few people infected, now we're up to 95. I got, and I have one person who we're waiting to hear, so I may be losing one deputy, we're waiting to hear if his wife was exposed by a doctor, so, or we're darting, so we should wait to hear if she's positive or not, and who may go on their 14-day quarantine. So it's, it's everybody, you know, we just need to be, you know, the social distancing, that's the biggest thing right now, you know, the basic iTunes stuff. We all need to just work together and put our heads together. And, you know, we could play this by, you know, if it gets worse, then I could see, you know, saying yes to the select board members and Adolfo, yes, it's time to put that second person in place.
So were, the request that you had, Sheriff, was that for the town, you were looking to the town to approve an additional officer during the day?
It was roughly, we're looking at the 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM and it'd be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Those seem to be our highest call volume days.
Can you just put together what it is that you would like and just a rough cost on that and submit it up to Adolfo and then we can send it out to the board and we can
Absolutely.
evaluate, so we know kind of what we're getting into.
Right.
Adolfo and the highway staff, we still have everybody on the crew?
We have everyone except one person and they chose to accept, they were already on a one-week vacation, asked if they could extend to an additional week because of just issues that were occurring and just concerns that they had. We had allowed staff that if they wanted to use vacation for precautionary measures that they could, so they agreed to do that and we waived that part of the personnel policy. Other than that one person, everyone else is on board, still on the job.
And looking at the roads, I would say they did just fine.
Yeah.
And water, wastewater?
Water and wastewater, everyone is still on the job. We had one person out last week unrelated to, it was due to, it was due to an illness, but it was more of a stomach borne illness and not any of the symptoms that has been reported. So we're still at 100%.
Right. Anybody have any other parts of town operations that they have concerns with?
This is Pat. I have a question for Bill Boniak. Bill, you say that what you're talking about could be in the future. You're not seeing that as an issue yet, having the second person on?
We just recently, in the past week, noticed the increase in calls. That's why with our supervisors, we discussed this and if it brings to your attention now, then wait. So like I said, we could, you know, keep an eye on this and if it starts getting overwhelming, then let's put it in place.
Yeah, that's what I thought you meant. Thank you.
Any other questions? So the other item under this that we have is the board passed a motion to waive penalties and fees on taxes that weren't paid by the March 31st deadline, allowing people an additional three months, which would get them to the June 30th date, and then without incurring penalties and fees. Then it came out that we needed to also waive some liens on property. So Adolfo and Cliff dug into it, working with Joyce to figure out how to make all this work. So what you received is a sample motion that not only waives penalties and interest, but keeps liens from being filed against the properties that don't pay by March 31st. And it also clarifies that what we will pay to the school district is only those values that we've collected. So the statute says that the town will pay the school within 20 days, the taxes that have been collected for the school, and by either 120 days or the end of the fiscal year, we'll pay the balance, whether it's collected or not. In the past, Randolph's practice has been just to issue the check within the 20 days for the entire amount due because the majority of our taxes were collected at that point. But making a change in giving folks this extra three months is going to put an impact on the amount that's collected. So to keep us from absorbing the hit of paying all of the school payment at once, we need to just clarify that we're only paying the school the portion that's collected. And there've been conversations with the school about this too, so it's not coming as a surprise to them. Any thoughts on that?
I just have a question about, this is Tom, the clause or the sentence that talks about with the remaining balance to be paid within 120 days from the due date, so that gives them, that gives us an additional 30 days beyond the 90-day extension. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
So that's a state statute that the town has to pay a balance due within 120 days to the school, whether we've collected it or not.
I see.
I have a question, Trini. It's Pat.
Yep.
It looks like we've changed the intent a little bit because I thought the original intent was to just delay penalties and interest on fiscal year 2020 taxes. And the way I read it here says interest and penalties that accrue on unpaid property taxes, including accounts that are currently delinquent. I didn't think the intent was to waive the interest on previous years.
I think that language change was made, Pat, after you brought it to our attention, that the software that calculates this doesn't differentiate between the two.
Well, it's different.
Well, maybe that.
Payments for 2020, but you, I think you can still do it. You don't have to forego the interest on previous ones. Say if somebody owes money from a year or two ago, they've already been charged the penalty and they get interest added every month. So it seems to me like this should be targeted towards fiscal year 2020 unpaid property taxes, which would mean both payments for 2020, but it wouldn't apply to previous years if they still owed from previous years. Thought that's what we were talking about.
Yep. Where would you like to make the language change?
I would say move the delay for a period of three months from the date of March 31st, 2020. All interest and penalties that accrue on unpaid fiscal year 2020 property taxes and then delete, including accounts that are currently delinquent. And I thought that was in our, as our intent to do it for both payments in 2020, but not previous years. Did other people?
Everybody good with the change that Pat wants?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it too. That was my understanding as well. That's correct.
Okay. Any other changes?
There is, if I could add one change, just in double-checking our citations, on sentence, in the second paragraph, sentence four at the end that leads into sentence five, it cites 32 VSA 133. The change would be 32 VSA 4793.
So 32 VSA 133 is the chapter, 47 is within that chapter?
Yeah, that's right, but the citation 32 VSA 133 leads us to something about a very random, so if, yeah, 32 VSA 133 cites a different section that talks about something else. But you are correct, Trini, it is 32 VSA, Chapter 133, but the citation of it, 32 VSA 133 leads to something unrelated to this entirely. So if we were specific and said 32 VSA 4793, it talks about the specific subsection that is related to this particular item.
Or if we just added the word "chapter"?
That would work. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the exact citation. It would just say 32 VSA Chapter 133 and then it would apply for the entire chapter.
Does it need to say Section 4793?
Yeah, that's what I'm not clear on.
So if you cite a law and you do 32, that's your title, via Vermont statutes annotated, 133 would be your first section, would be, so it's probably in Chapter 1. And what we're saying is the part we want, the part that deals with all this is Chapter 133. That has all the laws. Within there is little subsections that deal with, you know, the definition of stuff and, you know, liens, billing process, notification, all that. But Adolfo's saying is within that, we either need to add chapters to it, so it is the entire chapter dealing with this that we're addressing, or we need to add the actual subsection in there, which is 4793.
So could we simply say VSA 133 subsection 4793? For Section 4793?
You have to define it as the chapter before 133. Either we remove 133 and put 4793, or we add the word "chapter" after VSA.
Trini, this is Adolfo. It doesn't sound like there's a preference with anyone in the board, so if you prefer, we can just do 32 VSA Chapter 133.
I'm fine with that.
Well, when you pull it up on the internet, so if you pull it up and you look at the book, you look in there, Chapter 133 takes you to all those other subsections. So I think I would be fine with just saying Chapter 133.
Yeah, and 4793 is actually the warrant that gets drawn up. And this is where we get into the kind of, the, you know, where is the lien authorization? My preference is to go with the whole chapter so we've covered it.
Yeah. I'm with me.
I'm with me.
Okay.
Yep.
Could I ask?
Any other comments on the motion?
This is Pat. I have one other. I would like to add, in the previous motion we had, we encouraged those Randolph taxpayers who are able to pay their taxes or a portion of their taxes on time to do so, if that helps the town as a whole to help others needing that at this time. I'd like to add that at the end because I think it's important that we let people know that, don't wait 30 days to pay, if you can, pay now. I wonder what other people think.
I'm fine with that.
We've done a good job messaging that. Thanks Larry.
Well, I'd put that in as part of a proposed language for that front porch forum post, but I post, but I did not actually include that after Joyce's comments, but I can.
I think it's important to message that.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay. Um, after, after, for tomorrow's post, I'm gonna, um, include the language about the, the lien not, you know, also being included in our motion. And, um, and when I do that, I'll, I'll include this additional, um, message.
Sounds good.
Yep. Can we move the, uh, motion that has amended?
Was that a motion, Tom?
I, I was asking if that was the next step, if there were no further comments.
That is the next.
Further comments, I'll make the motion that we move the, uh, we move the motion as, or the resolution as amended.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I missed two, this is Shannon. I missed two seconds of that.
It was Pat.
Pat did.
Thanks.
Hey, next up is the tax anticipation note?
Trini, just before we go, just, just wanted to confirm that there were, there were a lot of ayes, some overlap, but, uh, I wrote down five yeses. Um, is that, it sounds accurate. Just wanted to confirm.
I heard five.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
And, Adolfo, may I interrupt? This is Melissa, the town health officer. Bob and I are here to answer any health-related questions. Um, are we done with the health portion of the program?
We are.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns for us?
No, just good luck.
Okay. Um, we're available, and I know that everybody has our numbers. If need be, we're very happy to help in any way.
Great.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Bob.
I'm welcome.
You're welcome. Bye-bye. Have a good night, everybody.
You, too.
Thank you. Bye.
Unless you've got something else for me, Adolfo, I'm gonna sign off. This is Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks, Wayne. You're welcome. Actually, for any of the firemen that are on, we're just gonna talk about a tax anticipation note and then other business, old business, which I don't think we have anything under, so. Um, next up is the tax anticipation note. This is to authorize Joyce to go out and seek rates and get a note in place in case we need it for day-to-day operations.
We are hoping that the board would make a motion to authorize staff to, to seek a tax anticipation note.
So usually with these, uh, it requires a, a board vote, and then there's like a resolution that we have to vote in after you select who you're gonna have the note with. I think all we can do tonight is authorize you to go out and get rates and who's interested, and then most of them have a very specific resolution that we have to adopt.
That is correct, Trini. Uh, we, we did plan, uh, if the board authorized us today to seek out a tan, to bring all necessary paperwork, uh, to the April select board meeting.
Awesome. Any questions or comments on that?
Do you know what the amount will be?
Uh, I don't, but we have the opportunity, I believe, um, through the voters at town meeting, to seek up to the total amount that we could, um, that we are anticipating through tax. Uh, I don't expect for us to, to seek that high of a tax anticipation note. Typically, it's in the vicinity of, 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 uh, one million dollars, but even then, uh, we only draw from it if necessary. Um, but we don't have an amount yet. Um, that's something I, I would, uh, speak with Cliff and Joyce about when we, when we seek the rates and what's out there.
Thank you. So essentially, this is like a credit line, and you already know how much of it you might need?
Uh, yeah, for the most part, it is. It's, it's if we need, we need to draw money for instances where we don't think people are gonna pay taxes or something in this scenario.
Right.
Uh, it is, it is almost like a line of credit, but not exactly a line of credit.
Right, not exactly. But, so you'd have a better picture of this probably come first couple days of April, right?
Uh, probably sooner than that. I think by the end of this, within the next few days, we're gonna know if people continue to pay their taxes or not. If, you know, for all we know, everyone decides to pay, and then we may not need a tan. Or we don't have anyone paying from this point going forward, and then we, you know, we're, we're left with a potential deficit. So we'll know within the next few days how much we will need for a tan.
I think it's reasonable for you to go out to the banks for a line up to a million dollars, and then we can, uh, it can be narrowed in if need be. But again, it's, you know, you can have a million dollars and not borrow against it at all.
Yeah.
Correct. All right. So I make a motion that we, uh, authorize Adolfo to work with Joyce to proceed with tax anticipation, a tax anticipation note to discuss, to determine what the rates might be.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a five zip, Adolfo.
Thank you.
Uh, any old business?
No old business, no.
Other business?
None.
No executive session?
No executive session.
A little hard.
Yeah, yeah.
And the next motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn?
I think Pat beat you.
All right. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. We are done. Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.